Yes.
Okay, I think we'll go ahead and get started. I'd like to call to order the regular council meeting December 15th, 2020. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I think Councilmember Taylor is leading that this time.
Thank you, Mayor. If the audience and those following online will please arise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our invocation tonight will be by Bert Mall. Bert, are you here? Not here. Councilmember Hendricks, could we ask you to offer the invocation tonight?
Our dear Father in heaven, we thank thee for the many blessings that we enjoy this day. We thank thee for the opportunity to attend this meeting. We're grateful for the opportunity to serve as councilmembers and we're grateful for those people that have chosen to attend and observe our meeting tonight and participate in the activities before us. Best thy blessing on this meeting that we may be guided by thy Spirit as we listen to discussions tonight and we make decisions in the best interests of our town and our citizens. We say these things in the name of our Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Can we have the roll call?
Mayor Scott Anderson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Young Kaprowski.
Here.
Councilmember Lauren Hendricks.
Present.
Councilmember Jared Taylor. Councilmember Kathy Tilke.
Here.
And Councilmember Amy Yentz.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you. We have no presentations or proclamations tonight. We'll go to communications from citizens.
We have not received any comment cards for the communications from citizens. Are there any citizens in the audience that wish to speak? Thank you. We'll move on to the consent calendar. We'll be pulling items two, six, and nine at the request of council members. Are there any other items that wish to be pulled? We'll also move up agenda items 20 and 21 from the administration, which are a motion to appoint Amber Coleman to the Public Facilities Municipal Property Corporation with a term beginning January 2nd, 2021, and ending January 1st, 2024. Agenda item number 21 is a motion to appoint to the Water Resources Municipal Property Corporation, James Graham and Nick McAluso with terms beginning January 12th, 2021, and ending January 11th, 2024, and Lisa Horn with a term beginning January 12th, 2021, and ending January 11th, 2023. So may I have a motion for the consent calendar items 1, 1A, 3, 4, 5, 7, 7A, 8, 10, 11 through 14, 14B, 15, 16, 20, and 21? So moved.
Second.
Please vote. That passes 6-0. We'll move to item number two. Discussion by Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Mayor, if you're okay, I'll just address two and six together. It's kind of the same topic. I do not support a lot of the federal grant, the federal spending. Number two is certainly a worthy cause. Definitely support that. Would like to see that. We support that locally. I think that is a good initiative. I think federal sources is the wrong thing. Number six relates to, you know, your traditional welfare spending to expand subsidized housing in the town. And the feedback that I get from residents is that there's enough that we have in the portfolio and to expand that, it would deteriorate housing prices. And that's not, you know, in the best interest. Plus, with the federal spending, that's certainly not in the best interest of our residents. And people need to understand the economics of the, you know, federal spending. Obviously, it's completely out of control at this point right now, under Democrat or Republican. Doesn't really matter. But what's basically happening is, the way you have to pay that back, there's two ways. Either higher taxes or inflation. And so when you have such massive ramping like we've seen this particular year, unprecedented, those are really the only two ways that you can pay that back. So that's really why I'm trying to curb that, to whatever extent, even though it's a small effort. It's token in these manners. Somebody has to stop. And I do feel for those retirees on fixed incomes that don't have Social Security. That's going up as fast as the rate of inflation or the future taxes that are going to be required to cover the spending. So Mayor, thank you for letting me take both of those on at the same time and vote separately. Thank you.
Any further discussion from councilmembers on items two or six? Will vote or have a motion to approve items two and six from this consent agenda? So moved. Do you have a second?
Second.
Please vote. It's a 3-3 vote.
Could you brief us on what happens in that case, Chris?
Mayor Anderson, pursuant to the code, for an agenda item to pass, has to be passed by a majority of the council who is voting. So a tie means it does not pass.
Yes, we can vote on them separately. We can do that separately, Chris.
Okay. We'll take a motion to approve item number two at this time. So moved.
I believe that we need a motion for reconsideration before we can revote.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Okay. We'll take a motion for reconsideration to vote on items two and six separately. So moved. Second.
The motion has to be moved and seconded by someone on the prevailing side, I believe.
That is correct. And in this case, there was a 3-3 tie. So I'm not sure what the code would provide because there was not a prevailing side.
Well, for a motion for reconsideration, I believe you'd have to have a motion and a second from someone that voted negative.
That voted negative.
If we're going to reconsider, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There wouldn't be a need to reconsider if the prevailing side is the negative side.
Is the negative side because it didn't pass. That's correct.
I withdraw that motion. So you can make the motion? So do you want to make a motion?
Yeah. I'll make a move for that we vote to approve agenda item two.
Reconsider item two.
In reconsideration.
I think, yeah, you need to reconsider it first.
So a move that we reconsider or vote on agenda item two.
Second. Please vote. Okay, 5-0. That reconsideration is upheld. So we'll now take a motion to vote on agenda item number two. So moved to approve. Do you have a second? For agenda item number two approval?
Second.
Please vote. Item number two passes four to two. Thank you. Councilmember Yentz, would you like to discuss item number nine?
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor. I got some background information on this item, which is a contract for consulting services to evaluate some of the school safety and congestion around some of our schools. Specifically, 10 of our schools, which I don't know if there's a staff person on call who wants to elaborate on that, but I have reservations about this, not only because I do think that this is something that I want to ensure that we're able to collaborate with the schools on, so if there's potential improvements to, you know, make circulation around these areas better, that we have a chance to maybe share those costs. But additionally, I think that this is probably something that would have more merit in the future. Obviously, right now, traffic patterns are anything but normal and until they kind of settle into whatever that new reality is going to look like, I don't think this is the optimal time to do a study and to spend this money on this because we might not be getting really good information. People are obviously, there's fewer people who are commuting, who are traveling to work, and those patterns of behavior have not normalized yet. And so I'm happy to either postpone this or just not supportive of it at this time.
Is Ryan Blair on the call? Could we have him speak to those concerns?
I'm on here. Can you guys hear me? Can anybody hear me? I'm sorry.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your questions, Councilmember Yentz. Yeah, so this project is based off of the congestion and safety around schools within the town right-of-way. So part of this contract will be to evaluate and coordinate with the schools. But the purpose of this is to find locations around the town of Gilbert School System by doing field reviews, crash that analysis, capacity analysis, queuing analysis, to find ways that we can try to better the commute and the safety of the students, the traveling public, and everybody around schools. So basically, in a nutshell, it's everything within the town right-of-way. Of course, with that being said, there is that coordination effort that will need to be taken place with the schools themselves to make sure that the things we are doing is helping promote safety within their students.
Ryan, during what months or timeframe would the consultant be reviewing the school or doing the field reviews for this project?
So if this passes moving forward, essentially, this would probably, they would start this analysis starting and probably examining where they, but we have the flexibility, with that being said, if there's some concerns. We have the flexibility of choosing those dates and the start dates moving forward.
Any further comments or questions from councilmembers?
Excuse me, Vice Mayor Kaprowski. David Fabiano is also on WebEx and he would like an opportunity to speak on this item, if that's okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Anderson.
Good evening.
Councilmember Yentz, thank you. I apologize. I'm having some technical difficulties here. The question you ask is a very good one. The schools are one of the places where we have historically, each and every year, a lot of concerns and issues and complaints are raised by the public. The public that's wanting to get by the schools and also those that are using the schools. So it's one of our biggest challenges and issues that we have from a traffic perspective because it's very acute, the experience that we have when the school starts and those morning time drop-offs and afternoon pickups. This study is to, again, look what are the opportunities within the right-of-way. Within the town of Gilbert, we have three different school districts that we have the pleasure to work with in the Chandler Unified, the Gilbert Public Schools, and also the Higley Unified School District, along with a number of very successful charter schools as well. And that discussion and dialogue is ongoing with all of those to look to ways to improve the safety and circulation around their campuses. And this study is, again, in an effort to be proactive, looking forward into some of those places where we know we've had historical challenges and ways that we could potentially address them. And Vice Mayor Kaprowski, to your question about when will we do the data collection, that's a very difficult answer. And it's one where if the in-person school is occurring, then we would want to do it in the spring. If that's going to be something that's still a modified schedule, we may end up pushing that to the fall when we would hope that we may be back to a more traditional in-person learning model. And those patterns are much more typical of what we've experienced over the past years. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Were those issues that you brought up experienced in this most recent semester?
Thank you, Mayor Anderson, Vice Mayor Kaprowski. This recent semester has been one that's been quite interesting. We've had some complaints, but not the level that we had in the past. The, I don't know if the term is the right term here or not. The modified in-person learning schedules where sometimes they're there or the hours reduced to the days of the week so that the amount of people accessing the schools on a daily basis hasn't been as severe. Earlier in this COVID pandemic, the amount of traffic that we were experiencing in the community had also been reduced by a fairly significant margin as well, which pulled some of those pressures off. We still had complaints, again, not to the severity that we typically have, but there were still complaints that existed. We know there's a number of schools where we have some issues that are structural in nature. And those are really the ones that we're kind of most intent upon finding ways, collaborating with the school. What can the town do within the right-of-way? What can the school do onsite within their properties and working together to find a way to help, you know, provide a more safe and appropriate use there? Ones that come to mind off the top of my head, Higley High School and circulation there. And there's an accident history there. There's quite a bit of accidents that do occur there because of just the crush that happens with traffic. And we've worked with Higley Unified, trying to find ideas and ways to fix that. And those are the kinds of things that we're going to be using with this study to help us address planning forward, again, in collaboration and consultation with the school districts and the schools themselves.
Thank you, David. Councilmember Yentz?
Thank you for that information, David. Do you have any background on which schools, which 10 schools were chosen and maybe why those were singled out? Or, you know, is there a plan to extrapolate some of that information and use it in similar scenarios for the other schools? Or could you elaborate on that maybe?
Thank you, Mayor Anderson, Councilmember Yentz. That is a wonderful question. And I apologize for not being prepared. I'm actually pulled over to the side of the road in my car right now, taking my daughter to a concert at a school. And, but there are some very particular ones where we've had some, the challenges have been severe and we've been working with the schools for a long period of time. Higley High School, again, is one I bring up. There's some elementary schools. Typically, where we're having the biggest challenges are schools that are located along arterial routes. And just, that brings some very particular challenges with them. The idea that you suggested there of what can we do to extrapolate this outward? Absolutely, that's something that we're thinking about. And one of the nice things that, to benefit of, the benefits that we have is when we're working with Gilbert Public Schools or Higley Unified and we're working at the district level and the school level at the same time, that being able to extrapolate that is much easier because the district kind of understands the mission and the goals that the town and the tools and things that we have available to move towards, you know, addressing those concerns. So we would use this to be forward-looking and help us at other locations. And even as new schools are coming online, trying to use that in consultation with them as they're bringing their new facilities online to try to prevent some of those challenges by design.
Thank you, David. And Councilmember Yentz, I believe this part of the scope was to help identify those top 10 schools. Any other comments from councilmembers? Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, I just think this is a timing issue. And if it's a priority, I think it should just roll into the next year's fiscal budget for a couple reasons. Number one, you know, schools, there's been a massive increase in online enrollment. And it's unclear to know how many of those are actually going to return to in-person even after COVID blows through. And it's probably going to take a year or so to settle that out. So that's number one. And number two is, the districts even before COVID and especially after COVID have seen declining enrollment, except for Chandler Unified. I'll talk about that in just a second. So the traffic issues that have persisted and they've been just chronic forever and ever, this is something that always happens around all schools, is going to be lightening up. It just is. The demographics show it. The numbers show it pre and post COVID. Chandler Unified, as you know, passed a bond successfully to put in Gilbert a large comprehensive high school and then two elementaries. They don't necessarily need this because they're going to go through it just as part of their planning process. And the town's going to be actively involved in giving them feedback on the comprehensive high school because that's really going to be the big one. The elementaries, as well as they come through, they're going to go through the normal process and get the services that they need from the town. So for me, if this is a big priority, I think we need to see some of those demographics set. Maybe it just rolls into the next year's fiscal budget because funding it now and doing it now is just based on such a fluid enrollment at schools that I just don't think it's money well-spent that's going to help us down the road because things are changing so fluidly with the traffic situations at schools. So those are some thoughts to share. And of course, I know this education space intimately. And I just think if it is important, probably a year from now would be a good time. We're just putting it in the next year's budget to pick up. Thank you for the time.
Any other comments from councilmembers?
Councilmember Yentz, is that what you're thinking of in postponing, putting it into next year's budget?
I would just add that, having some familiarity with these types of studies, that I do support any improvements to school safety and transportation. The data that would be analyzed is historic, so that would be available and it would be pre-COVID. But the observations I would support as long as school was in-person in session. All right, do we have a motion to approve consent agenda item nine? Mayor, I'm curious if we feel this needs to be brought back in next year's budget. Is that what the motion should be?
Yes, we can make that suggestion, that it come back in the next year's budget cycle.
I think this is...
Point of order, Mayor. Point of order. That can just be done with direction. It doesn't need a motion.
Yes.
So we'll table item number nine for a future budget cycle. That concludes the consent agenda, Mayor.
Thank you. We'll move on to public hearings. Are there any items to be pulled by the council? In that case, I'll open the public hearing on items 17, 18, 19, and 19A. I'll close the public hearing. Do I hear a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. Please vote. Motion passes. Under administrative items, we've completed item 20 and 21. We'll go to item 21A. Item 21A under administration is the reconsideration of town council's action at the October 28th, 2020 special meeting approving resolution number 4165, adopting the new logo and brand. It's my understanding with this one, the first action we need to take is to vote on reconsideration of our action on October 28th. Once we've done that, we can have the staff give us a presentation on the work that's been done since that time. So moved.
Does that have to be made by the dissenting party?
Party on the prevailing side.
The prevailing side, yeah. Which I know Jared was on the prevailing side. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Please vote. Motion passes. This time, we'll invite staff, I think we have Dana with us, to give us a presentation on the work that's been done since that time. Dana?
Mayor, members of the council, just to refresh your memory from the August 20, or I'm sorry, the October 28th council meeting, when we received, post that meeting, a desire to have some additional input into the monogram feature itself. So we put together a working group with a couple council members, as well as a cross-section of staff from across the organization to solicit input and feedback on that and make modifications to the monogram and bring that back for council consideration tonight. So with that, I will hand it off to Dana Birchman, our Chief Digital Officer, to walk you through those revisions.
Thanks, Patrick.
Thank you, Patrick. Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm Dana Birchman, Chief Digital Officer. It's a pleasure to be here with you tonight. I'm going to share my screen so you can see the presentation. Hopefully, you can see that okay. As Patrick mentioned, we were with you on October 28th to present the branding and logo to you. This is a project for the Centennial Year that we set out, two years ago, actually. And we're very happy to bring it to you. After that meeting, we did get some feedback about the monogram specifically. And we convened the working group with the council members, as well as met with police and fire and a cross-section of employees from across the organization. And so I'm very happy to share with you tonight where we landed. But before I do that, I wanted to share something else with you that I didn't get a chance to share last time, but it's the logo evolution of Gilbert. Coincidentally, the logo has been updated every 20 years since 1980. And so you'll see some similar themes, one being the dot that has been in all versions of the logo. So here we are in 2020. In 2012, Patrick came to the town, hired me, and we took the existing logo as it was and we added, freshened it up a little bit, gave it some color, gave it some guidelines and brand standards. And then we've been working with that logo for eight years. So it's been a pleasure to be able to go through this process and come up with a brand for the next 100 years of this community. So you'll see on the far right is the monogram that I mentioned. You may have noticed some changes from when we were here before. Like we said, when we met with the groups and we took their feedback and really tried to implement some of the changes without disrupting the entire brand, sticking with a lot of the themes that we loved around the shapes and shaping our future together. And as you'll see at the top, the circle, what was a different color is... And as you'll see at the top, the circle, what was a different color is now yellow and a little bit more vibrant. And then also we've altered the shape at the bottom, and I think that it helps it to make look a more literal G. That was another piece of feedback that we heard loud and clear. And so you'll see, again, sticking with the sunset inspiration that we talked about, the yellow being still playing into that and being very important for us. But I feel that these changes do tell a really important Gilbert story. This is the black and white version of the logo, you'll see the cutouts here. And as Patrick talked about, and I did too, we did take this out into the organization and get some feedback, and I mentioned the tagline, "Shaping a New Tomorrow Today," all the opportunities that that gives us to work with into the future, in the organization, in the community. And here's just some, some of the feedback we got. People liked the slight tweaks. I think everyone overwhelmingly was happy with where we landed, with the yellow and the shape adjustments. And they felt that the current logo is more energetic, fun, vibrant. Some other comments were it pays, does an excellent job of paying homage to Gilbert's heritage, gives us a glimpse to the city of the future. We have lots of options to customize this for the various departments. So people said, you know, they felt it was very informative, collaborative, and appreciated listening to all the discussion from the team. So it was really nice to hear this feedback from the organization. We also met with police and fire, they too were very receptive. We were very understanding of the impacts to their department and really wanted it to be minimal in the sense that where they saw the craziness swirl, it swapped out with the new logo, but they were able to keep a lot of the elements in both police and fire that they felt near and dear, were near and dear to them. We're actually meeting with them tomorrow to talk more specifically about their impacts to their departments. But you'll see here, again, the inspiration of the sunset color scheme and really staying true to that. We all know the Arizona sunsets are so beautiful as a backdrop for us and thought that it played really well, and you'll see the addition with the yellow. So even though those might look like minimal changes, they do impact the entire brand. And so although we were ready to launch around Gilbert Day's time, we will need some time, some of the pieces have to go back to the drawing board, but with your approval tonight, we will do that and work over the coming months to launch this into the organization. We will have a reveal to the public tomorrow, a little sneak peek, and as I mentioned, the meetings with police and fire. And then we look forward to integrating this brand, not only in the organization, but in the community for many years to come. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dana. Questions and comments from council?
Mayor?
Councilmember Tilke?
Thank you. I was able to serve on the committee, and I just wanted to take a moment to thank the staff for reaching back out to the consultant and really taking a look at the brand and what we could do because of the comments that we did receive. The element piece of that is so important as it goes hand in hand with our tagline. And I know that it's not a major change, but I do believe making sure that we can find that G very clearly. There are lots of different elements in that, that people may see different things than we see, but I feel that it is progressive, it does provide homage to our, our history, but as we're moving forward. And while people may see a person in there, and there was negative comments we received at one time about that, the person that I see, especially when I saw it transposed onto the fire truck, to me says it's about people caring for people, and it's, it's a message that's there. Maybe not everybody will get it, and maybe not everybody will like it, but I do believe it will take us into the future, and I will be supporting it. Thank you.
Other comments? Councilmember Taylor? Mayor, just a couple of thoughts on this. I certainly voted for it before, and I'll, I'm going to continue to support it. I think that there's some, I think there's value in an organization that just keeps the look and feel fresh and, and updated, and I think this helps us to remember that we're 100 years young, right? And we have a very bright future, and the bright colors, I think relays that. I, I agree with Councilmember Tilke's comments about making sure some of the features are distinct, so some of the misunderstandings might, might be tampered down a little bit. And I think also the education of the elements, I think also helps understand the richness of what it is and how, how it can be used in a lot of different ways. And every 20 years is a good time, and people need to realize that, hey, this is, this is a decision for, for the next little bit, and it'll change again. I think at the same time, recognizing that there are certain icons that are never going to go away, whether we rebrand or not, like the water tower, right? That's going to be an icon that we're going to use in a lot of our collateral for many, many years, and that'll be fun, and we'll see that. And that's not, I, I don't think that we're necessarily saying by introducing this, we're replacing that, or taking that away. I see this as an add to the repertoire of things that will help us identify the greatness of our town and, and the bright future that we have. I don't also see this as replacing the We the People icon that we have here. I think that's very important, that shows that that's what we do, is we're representative of, of the people, and we take that responsibility and our oath very, very seriously. And we may see that icon up here, and, you know, who knows what'll happen in the future, but I don't know that it's necessarily a takeaway as much as it is an add. And it's a fun way that we can recognize our youthfulness at 100 years and, and the bright future that we have. So Mayor, I'll, I'll also be supporting this and appreciate the town taking the extra time to, to listen and get some feedback specifically from some of the critics. So thank you, thank you for the time. Other comments? I can, I can represent, even though Councilmember September's not here, I can represent what the conversation he and I had earlier, that he was one of the, he was the dissenting vote the last time. He is supportive of this change. He still had some concerns about the process, what it took to go through to get to this point, but he's very supportive of the, the new design, so. And for myself, I have the, the opportunity every month to get on a virtual call with the, with the MAG Regional Council. And the backdrop in that council meeting is always everybody's logo from all the cities and towns in the valley. And I can tell you that they all need to do some work to, to bring many of their logos up to date to, to reflect, as Councilmember Taylor is saying, reflect going into the future, that I think this represents very well our initiative, our City of the Future initiative. And, and I'm being supportive of the change. I was amazed at what little changes made such a big difference, and it looks very nice, I'd be supportive also. Other comments? Okay. At this point, we need to take a motion to accept the changes that have been made and to amend our original resolution. Is that correct, Chris?
Mayor Anderson, yes, the, the motion would be to approve the resolution as amended.
Right. Mayor, point of order. So we can do that in this meeting then with, as we've just brought it back, or does that need to be agendized as such, but we can do that tonight?
Correct, Councilmember Taylor, because the motion for reconsideration was agendized, and the oppor, the opportunity to vote on and discuss the original motion was also agendized.
With that, Mayor, I'd move to approve, as, as presented before us tonight. Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, please vote. That motion passes six zero. Thank you all. Patrick, we'll see you again in another 20 years. Moving on to item 22, boards, commission, and committees. Do any of the council liaisons have a report?
Mayor, I do.
Vice Mayor?
I'd like to report on the Citizens Transportation Task Force. We will be beginning to meet again in January, and we currently have three open positions for the Citizens Transportation Task Force. The board positions are made up of representatives from specific areas in Gilbert. So at this time, we're looking for citizens that would be able to represent Quadrant One, which is northwest Gilbert, Area Six, which is near the Santan Village area, and Area Nine, which is south Gilbert area. So if you're interested, please apply for that task force before January 4 at 5:00 P.M.
Any other items? Thank you. Item 23, we have one policy item, number 2021-01, consider approval of council policy, number 2021-01 regarding purchases from members of the governing body. Looking for discussion or motion? Still moved? Is a motion? Or a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, please vote. Thank you. Motion passes six zero. Future meetings, items, there are non-communications, report from the town manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to second your congratulations to Dana and her team and the work. It was a multi-year effort and a lot of work, and I really appreciate the time our council members took to participate on that working group, as well as the employees who helped us tweak that. We're excited to get that launched and start using that in a way that represents our community and our future, and the important role we all play in maintaining this beautiful community and our quality of life. So congratulations to Dana, as well as a member of her team. Some of you may know, many of you probably do not, Zara Bish, who is our resident creative genius, I would say. She helped a lot in this behind the scenes and working with her contractor, so appreciate all the hard work that led up to this, and thank you for your, your support of that. Outside of that, I'd like to thank each of you. This is our last meeting of the calendar year. It's been an eventful year, to say the least, and many of you have stepped up and chosen to serve at a time of great uncertainty and unprecedented anxiety in our community because of the things we're struggling with. And I, I, on behalf of all the employees in Gilbert, really appreciate the time you're taking away from your, your work, your families, your personal interests, to help guide us through this time. And I am very appreciative to the employees of Gilbert, Arizona, who have really risen to the occasion to make sure that we continue to deliver vital services to this community and show an incredible amount of resiliency in responding to the things that we've had to deal with while we continue to help those in need in Gilbert. So with that, I thank you for a great, let me revise that. Thank you for an interesting 2020, and I for one am very much looking forward to all the great things to come in 2020, or 2020 and 2021. Thank you.
Thank you. Report from council members? Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Tilke?
I'm way over here, I'm doing doubles physical distancing tonight here. Over, over the weekend, I was at a special event, it was really fun, and, and we had some off-duty officers, and it just reminded me how excellent our police officers and there, there was actually a traffic accident that happened, and they, they stepped in quickly and took care of things. It just reminded me how great they are. And so, Patrick, if you'll just pass along our thanks and appreciation and well wishes over the holiday, I mean, so many of, not just the officers, but our dedicated police and fire individuals, as well as solid waste, they are working over the holidays while we enjoy things, they're out picking up trash or cleaning up traffic accidents, and please let them know that those are recognized and very much appreciated. It was just a good reminder, again, just wanted to pass that along, and, and happy holidays and Merry Christmas to each of you, and thank you for a good year, and we're looking forward to another good year. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Any others? From the mayor, I, I just want to, ditto what Councilmember Taylor just said, I want to wish you all a very Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. I'll be out of town, enjoying grandchildren for a couple of weeks, so I hope you all have a very happy holiday. And I want to express to the staff, and especially to the council members, for the support you've given me these past few months. This has been quite a ride, so thank you very much, and let's have a great New Year next year. Thank you. With that, we are adjourned.